The Board of Education in an open session.
Derbeck?
Here.
Isla?
Here.
Richter?
Here.
Laboue?
Here.
Johnson? Here. How?
Here.
Brown?
Here. Okay, we'll get started. And just a reminder, if you're present tonight, if you don't mind signing the signup sheet in the front of the room when you leave if you didn't do it already. If you would, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, civil, with liberty and justice. All right, so tonight, pretty straightforward agenda. We've got our typical administrative updates. There is a website update that will be presented as in terms of YouTube video, mini reports. We'll discuss a little bit about our retreat coming up this Saturday. We've got some calendar updates to go through and a little bit of a discussion on cell phones and remote learning. So with that, I'll pass it over to Dr. Shackelford for the administrative reports.
All right. Good evening, everyone. We're going to start tonight with Governor Pritzker's address yesterday that included his budget proposal for FY26. I'll be just highlighting things that are relevant to us here at OTHS. The most important piece is what does remain in the budget is $350 million for evidence-based funding. Those are the same tier funding that we've been receiving year after year for several years that makes an incredibly positive impact on our financial outlook. This Saturday, when we go over the five-year projections, you will see a side-by-side of what we look like with the continuation of this and what we would look like if it would fall off. So very thankful, and when you see how the projections are different, you'll be thankful that that's continuing as well. Only a $20 million increase in mandated categorical programs, that will not have a positive effect on us. So these are things like transportation, special education, private facility. Those have been prorated for years and years and years, and we're expecting deeper prorations because none of that $20 million dollars are for any of those items. So if you look at where we're prorated right now, when we prepare, we look at our costs, we prepare a claim, we submit it to the state, then they reimburse us. Right now, what we submit for transportation, we only get 79% back of. What we submit for special education, we get 69% back of. And for private facility tuition, 77%. So we're expecting some deeper cuts and some deeper prorations for next year, which is not great news. Still, though, for us, specifically at OTHS, that is balanced with us being a Tier One school and receiving that tier funding. So we won't feel the sting of that, at least not yet, as much as some other districts may. And then the $1.3 million for career in technical education is really just to continue programming as is. As I shared with you a few months ago, ISB proposed $142 million increase to those mandated categoricals in order to keep the current proration rate. So when you look at that $142 million recommended by ISB versus the $20 million that's in there, you can see what an impact that will have for those. Next, worth mentioning, this is a city project, but it does have an impact on the schools. There's been lots of talk throughout the city of O'Fallon on this proposed park place development. It is a development just north of the sports park. It's intended to be a mixed-use development. It will have commercial, single-family, and multifamily homes. The city did do an estimate based on the other developments that have come through in the past several years, and they think it will produce 10.4 new students total in grades K through 12. So in terms of enrollment, we don't anticipate that it will have an impact. Again, they don't have a crystal ball, but based on past practice, they anticipate it would have minimal impact on enrollment. The developers are not requesting TIF funding, so that could result in $1 million in property tax for OTHS specifically. The city is hosting open houses. They've had two already. I'm sure they'll have other meetings. There's a slew of information on that on the City of O'Fallon website. Again, I just wanted to highlight it because it does have an impact on OTHS. And it is proposed, not approved. Next, e-learning and cell phones. So Mr. Howe has put together, along with Mr. Graham, an e-learning committee. Years ago, when e-learning became an option following the pandemic, OTHS chose not to do that because the discussions with the administration, as well as department chairs and educators, was that e-learning does not provide the same level of education that in-person learning does. However, in the past couple of years, there's been more energy either from our community members and some of our teachers, interested in pursuing and looking at that again to see whether it might be a better fit. Ironically, the first e-learning committee meeting was scheduled for last Wednesday, and we had an emergency day. So the next meeting, I think, is coming up. I know. The next meeting's coming up at the end of this month. So the important things will be, you know, as they discuss this, is, you know, is it a good fit for us? How do you implement it with fidelity? You know, we know that when we had to do that long-term back in 2020, 2021, when that was new for us, that it was detrimental to the education of our students. In the short term, can we implement it with fidelity and make it valuable here at OTHS? Those are the types of things they'll be exploring. Also, I'm sorry, yeah.
I just wanted to speak to this.
Sure.
Just as one board member.
Okay.
COVID showed us that e-learning is an abject failure, not just here at OTHS. We didn't necessarily do anything better or worse, but the fall-off we saw for students across the country because of e-learning, I'm shocked that we're spending time on it with so much evidence that we have, not just from OTHS, but across the country. I would struggle without some very significant evidence and support from actual experts other than myself, right, to show that this is a good idea. We just had two years of a test across the country, millions of students impacted.
And that's the charge of the committee as they explore it.
Yeah.
But from what I understand, and why I think it's a great idea for us to be exploring it at least, is because if we don't have a plan that is registered with state, we can't just go to e-learning.
Correct.
For Snow Day. So in my opinion, but I will wait on the results of the committee, having a plan to allow us to go to e-learning if we have to, I think is good. Not saying that we will, but gives us that flexibility that if we feel we need to, if another emergency comes up, we have the authority to do it. And so just knowing that we can change up if we need to, I think, is worth us looking into it.
Sure. And just to provide some more information on number of days, there are, if those that have an approved e-learning plan, there is a five-day maximum for e-learning days. You still also have to build in five emergency days. So for example, now the O'Fallon area, we've had six days where we were not present at school. All five of ours were emergency days, and then we'll apply, which I'll get into in a minute, for what's called an act of God day for that sixth day. Those with e-learning plans maybe have had three e-learning days, and they've had three traditional emergency days, or some combination like that. Both of those carry a maximum of five, and if you exhaust one, you have to move to the other. Also, a consideration of changes in cellphone policies for 2025, 2026. We talked about this first at PTAC. We've received a lot of feedback from our professionals that the cellphones are a distraction and are a detriment here. And that's not just happening here, that's happening all over the place. In fact, another part of the governor's address was him supporting a ban on cellphones during instructional time at schools statewide. Now, we'll see whether that actually occurs or not. So we're having some conversations there as well as we move through the spring semester. And what we're hoping to do is have some plans in place. We do have some departments and teachers that are kind of piloting some level of a more strict cellphone policy this semester. Some did last semester. We've heard great feedback from that, from the teachers. So we'll see where we go, but in May, we should have the finished product of what we would like to recommend for next year by the time we get to the May PTAC meeting. All right, calendars. All right, let's go back to calendars. So we have an amended calendar for you to approve later on in tonight's meeting. All five of our emergency days were used as of this past Wednesday. I'm sorry, the 18th was Tuesday. So the last day of school now will utilize all emergency days that were posted in the calendar. So our last day of school will be Thursday, May 29. We had an additional cancellation yesterday, February 19. So we will request approval for what's called an act of God day for any emergency days beyond five. What that means is that we will request that that day not need to be made up. There is some literature on the state websites that says the state is being a little more discerning in granting those act of God days. But I haven't seen, I haven't heard of any follow-through because it's been a long time since we've had more than five emergency days used. But we will apply for that, and I will let you know after we apply. Goes through the regional superintendent, then the state superintendent. And basically, what it would do is it would make February 19 count on the calendar as a student attendance day.
If it's rejected, what is the outcome?
We would have to add another day to the calendar and find where we were doing that. All right, then you also have tonight the 2025-2026 school calendar to consider for approval. It aligns pretty much with what we've been doing for the past several years. The first day of school would be August 12. There are three school days for fall break, meaning five days off total if you include the weekend. That's what we've done every year for a number of years. Full two weeks at winter break, again, have done that for a number of years. A change, and this is a change from what you previewed last month, got some feedback and went back to the committee, and we talked about spring break a little bit more. So typically, OTHS has taken Thursday, Friday, and Monday for spring break. We had discussions on the front side before you previewed last month about moving to a full week. It was not the desire of the committee, however, to give up the Pulaski holiday or to push back the end of the year further. So we decided to keep spring break as is. However, a conversation came in, well, what if we just take that Wednesday off as well? So you will see now in the calendar for approval tonight, there's one day added to spring break. That's Wednesday is now off as well as Thursday, Friday, and Monday. So that'll be six days off total, including the weekend. The emergency days would be April 1, which is that Wednesday of spring break next year, and then May 21 through the 27. I do want to note that the order of the days would be used in is on the calendar for your approval as well. May 21 and 22, which are the Thursday and Friday before Memorial Day, would be utilized first for emergency days. Then we would back up to that Wednesday of spring break, and then go back to the 26th and 27th following Memorial Day, only if needed. Rationale for that is Memorial Day seems to be the issue in terms of students and families having concerns coming back. So we don't think it's bad to use Thursday, Friday, but then would rather go back if we use so many days again. Okay?
And what was the rationale for adding on Wednesday for the spring break?
A desire for a longer spring break, and also District 90 is taking off Wednesday as well. So it is more consistent with them. They're a larger feeder district. And then the last day of school next year would be May 27 if all emergency days are used.
And how about graduation date?
Graduation date is the Saturday following May 27. It's similar to what we have this year. And then finally, I just wanted to extend, and hopefully, I don't want to do this again next month. Hopefully, we're through the winter weather. I thought we were through it last week. We weren't. But a huge thank you to our grounds and maintenance crews. They did a great job in January, which was a bear to get cleaned up because it stuck around so long, and it was really nasty to get cleaned up. If you shoveled your driveway, you experienced that as well. But then again, yesterday, I mean, around 4:30, I was at both campuses, and it was crystal clear in both places. So they just did a really great job. So I just wanted to share that with you and extend my gratitude to them for the work that they do on those emergency days so that it's safe for the rest of us to come back. And that's all I have for the superintendent report. However, Mr. Schmaly is out tonight, so I'm going to continue into the financial report on his behalf. Sharing our revenues, we are through the end of January in this report. We have collected 84.4% this year compared to 83.3, very similar. $1.8 million collected in January. We did receive more federal grant funds in FY25, and really, a lot of that is the delay of payments. So if we file a claim in July, it's for last year's grant, but we're seeing that revenue this year. For our expenditures, when we're at the end of January, we're 58% through the year. We had expended around 55% of our expenditures compared to 53 last year, with $3.1 million in January. That is getting closer than it was in previous months. We had a lot of HLS expenditures on the front edge, HVAC projects, as well as some PAC payments in Fund 20. And we'll continue to see some fluctuation there, but pretty much following exactly as we would imagine that we would. And that's all I have. Are there any questions? All right, thank you.
Mr. Howe, principals report.
Good evening, everybody. All right, we're going to start off tonight with some great news. For those who excel award, okay? And OTHS teacher, Mr. Sayer, has earned the Award of Excellence through the Illinois State Board of Education. Those who excel awards. The Award of Excellence is the highest award given through the Illinois State Board of Education. To receive the Award of Excellence, the most prestigious of the Those Who Excel honors, educators must have demonstrated a commitment to both equity and to the success of all students. They regularly collaborate with colleagues, students, and families to create positive school cultures. They are lifelong learners who connect our schools to the community at large and who inspire other education professionals within and beyond their schools. Mr. Sayer is an incredible educator, who is a very humble, quiet man, but just an amazing, amazing teacher. He's been with us since 2005, and he is very, very deserving of this prestigious award. So Mr. Sayer has got the highest honor this year of these awards. So just very proud of Mr. Sayer. Moving on to Another great thing is our girls tennis team had a 3.6 cumulative GPA during their season. This qualified them for the IHSA Team Academic Achievement Award. Again, this is a great honor for the entire team, as well as Coach Aaron Tony. Also, a couple of weeks ago, as we know, the Bank of O'Fallon shootout took place on Friday, February 7, and Saturday, February 8. This showcased six different basketball games involving both our boys team and our girls team, and some of the Midwest's most elite basketball teams. This, of course, is a great event that brings together the entire community. This event is a year-long process of getting sponsors, finding and securing top-ranked high school teams from around the country, organizing a first-rate, first-class hospitality room, of course, is very important for workers and participants, and hiring workers for this amazing two-day event. This incredible event is organized by our athletic department, led by, of course, Mr. Patton, and also his assistants Neil James and Rick Gibson. There are countless other people who volunteer their time to make this just a wonderful event for our community. And I know a lot of you guys were there. Just amazing, amazing thing.
And as they pointed out on Saturday night, a lot of the people, especially in the hospitality room, have worked this event every year in its existence, which is 10 years now, I think, or so.
Yeah, I think so. And people don't realize the work that the athletic department does to find these teams. I mean, they literally start, I mean, with the moment that whistle ends, then the games, they're trying to find opponents for next year. It's a completely year-long process.
I do want us to try to make sure we don't have it at the same time as the next year. I think that split our audience some. I know it split me. And we didn't have as many people at the shootout. I think, I don't know if it was totally because of this, but I know some people were not able to come.
Yeah, and the reason why it was very unfortunate that both were the same weekend was the IHSA calendar rolled forward. Okay, so every five years or so, it rolls forward. And so, you know, it used to be where it was like the first weekend of February, so that's why it was a mix-up.
I guess every five years, we try to make sure that we pay attention to that.
Speaking of that, so on those same evenings, of course, was the February Frolic Show performed at the Milburn Campus Auditorium. This year, there were 13 acts that performed, including, of course, the now infamous teacher band, Snow Day, right? Pretty amazing stuff. February Frolic is organized by our music teacher Heidi Palet and coordinator of alternate program, Mr. Alex Printable. Of course, the spin is always great, and it's an absolute perfect storm of fun and energy that's felt by everyone in attendance.
I am curious, who wrote the song "Snow Day" that is now famous?
I wrote it when I was in a break.
Oh, that's awesome.
I'm Matt Murphy.
Also, this month, being February, is Black History Month. And every Tuesday for the month of February, students can go to the Panther Center during their advisory lunch for an activity. And for this month, the activities include, on February 4 was Crafts for Culture. On February 11 were line dances. February 18 was supposed to be the Many Steps Show, but unfortunately, Mother Nature got in the way on that one. And the next Tuesday is our panel discussion. A real special thanks goes out to Assistant Principal Dr. Coley. She's organized all these activities throughout the month of February. Okay, this brings us to our cellphone survey. So if you remember what we talked about with our cellphone usage here at school, last semester in the fall, the faculty and staff had a book study on a book called Anxious Generation. Over 40 staff participated in that book study, where we met three different times discussing the book. And what came out of that book study was a survey amongst the 40 who were involved in that, which really kind of got a feel for what we all felt should be our cellphone policy here at OTHS going forward. So a couple of weeks ago, we did a survey to the entire OTHS staff, and there were 216 responses to this. The first two questions, and it's kind of hard to see from back here, I know. It says, the first question was, would you like OTHS to consider moving to a school-wide cellphone policy? So our staff, as you can see here, overwhelmingly said yes. 80% said yes to that question. Number two, should students be allowed to use their cellphone during advisories? In this one, as you can see here, it was yes for the most part, okay? Question number three, should students be allowed to use their phone during lunch? And the overwhelming support was for yes on that question. Number four, this one's a little confusing, but it says, if OTHS went phone-free in the classroom, what do you feel is the best way to administer this? So they were offered four options, okay? And one of the options was to store the phone in the backpack. So 35% of the people that surveyed chose that as option number one, okay? 18.2%, so that should be option number two. 14.3% said three, and then 32.5% said four. It's kind of interesting. It's kind of all or nothing on that one. Another one was to have numbered pouches in the classrooms. And this is going to be the most popular one, and it was 29% said option one, 38.9% said option two. Dr. Shackelford mentioned earlier that some teachers are piloting this in their classrooms. The English department's done this. And with some real great stories that's come out of it. The way it works is they have a kind of like a shoe rack, if you want to think of it like that, in the classroom. They have to put their cellphone in that shoe rack, and that's for attendance purposes. It stays there the entire class period, and then when they leave, they grab it when they leave. Okay, so that's what the numbered pouches are. Another one was students keep their phone in their school locker. I believe District 90 has this policy in their junior highs. And this one, option one, as you can see, 21.8%, but this option four was the most in this one. And then a locked cellphone locker in each classroom was another option. And that one is pretty, you can see, spread out amongst the different options there. Any questions on this so far?
I do. If you've got some.
I got one, so yeah. All right. Question number five for the staff, or should teachers allow students to use their phones in class for classroom learning, even if there's a school-wide rule on no phones in class, okay? And 48% said no on that question. And then there was a sixth question, which was a free response, in which there were 83 different responses, okay? Now, if we turn our attention then to the next survey, this was given to all the parents and guardians last weekend. There were 1,375 responses, and questions one and two were the same questions as the staff had. Would you like OTHS to consider moving to a school-wide phone-free policy? Pretty interesting, a very different outcome here, okay? So you can see, 56% said no, you should not. So this was very different than what our staff said. And then, should students be allowed to use their phone during lunch? Overwhelmingly, yes to that question. Should teachers allow students to use their phones in class for classroom learning if there's no school-wide rule on no phones in class? Well, in this case here, as you can see, a 45% said no. Number four question was the same as the teachers had, what's the best way to do this? Well, that one option of storing the phone in the backpack was the winner here for parents. 69.2% said yes, this should be option number one. I want to say there was an option five there, and that was a mistake on my part, okay? Could have skewed the results hopefully a little bit, or didn't, I should say, but it probably did a little. But as you can see, as we go down the line here, the parents felt like the phone in the backpack was the best option, okay? The second option, the numbered pouches in the classroom, you can see, it was again, a little bit less than what they felt in the backpack. The third one, where they keep the phones in their school locker, again, a little bit less, once again. And then locked cellphone lockers in each classroom, and that was the least.
So what were the options on both of this? Is this a great, wonderful system?
Exactly.
So strongly agree, strongly disagree?
Yes.
So then what was option five?
Option five was nothing. It was, for some reason, the forms had an extra option there after I figured, after I saw it. So it was already sent out. I couldn't take it back when it started getting all those responses, so.
You picked an option that didn't have a
Somebody did.
They're to get their cellphone.
And then there was, of course, the number six question, and there was 444, 45 responses by parents and guardians.
So in terms of the responses, anything, any key takeaways?
I haven't looked at all at the parents one yet, the whole thing, because it just got done last night at 5, okay? From the staff one, though, it wasn't, it was kind of abnormal. It was very split. This topic, as we know, is a very emotional topic and very divisive topic with it. And so we are just trying to get a feel of what the community feels like, right, what the staff feels like. What we need to do next is see what the students feel like, okay? And then in the May PTAC meeting, we can discuss that and then make decisions going from those.
I thought one of the questions we were going to ask was, because if we implement this policy, are the staff willing to go along with the policy and adhere to it? And also, I didn't see that question.
Oh, that was not the question on there. If we go with the policy, you know, we would hope to get buy-in on that for the betterment of the whole. So that would be the job of all of us in the staff to make sure we're all pulling the same direction on that.
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, we want everyone to agree, but even if some staff didn't agree, when we set policy, they have to follow, right, if they want to remain employed.
Correct.
Yeah. But it's interesting that the division here, because for me, you know, when you look at studies, you know, the introduction of smartphones for children, clear connection with worse mental health outcomes, especially when those phones are introduced during developing brain years. In fact, I think just this week, I read a study that, you know, young women are affected the most when they have smartphones introduced around 12 and 13. And then young men are impacted the most, I think, when smartphones are introduced during brain development years of like 14 and 15, which is sort of the negative outcomes from that. I think the board, we've seen negative outcomes of fights, you know, drug use being facilitated by these cellphones and things like that. You know, I'm so shocked at the parents' response. That really shocks me. Yeah, that really, really shocks me. Yeah, because, you know, what, I think it's been pretty well established that the negative impacts for smartphones, what communications are we giving out to the community about some of those impacts?
Of how it impacts students?
How it impacts students, yeah.
Well, that's a great question, and that's something that we will have to work on and do better at, probably. Because we haven't sent out necessarily any kind of messages on that, but we could always.
We did when we did the sleep study, and we did captive sleep and studying with that, but we didn't do it in reference to having it on you in class. to having it on you in class.
And I think that also the, the way the first question is written, would you consider moving to a school-wide phone-free policy, doesn't say kids have to leave it at home so they don't have phone with them, they don't have access to them. So I can see how, you know, as a parent, they'd say, no, I'm not going to have my kid leave his cellphone at home. I need him to have the cellphone so they can call me when I need to pick him up or whatever. So I think there might have been, because I was surprised also about the fifty-six percent that said, um, no, but it might be because they, they're not interpreting or not under, you know, we just didn't ask it very artfully, we just did it general, no, no cellphones in school.
Yeah.
When are you trying to, are you working towards a decision date?
In terms of our school policy? Yeah, it would be before we have to give the state a student handbook to, to all to approve. Yeah, so which is usually...
Just for the, uh, rest of the board's information, I just, some anecdotal evidence. I have several family members that are educators now, uh, daughter, son-in-law, I've got a few that. Um, they are noticing staff where in districts which have no policy or don't want to enforce any sort of policy. They're having, they're having staff leave their profession. It's already tough enough to get teachers. And we start to have teachers who potentially are good teachers because there's constant disruption, you know, if they decide to leave the profession altogether and, and they're seeing that in all three of the districts that I know of, or all I have to say on the river.
They're leaving their profession because they don't have cellphones?
Because, and their administration won't back them.
Cause they're so disrupted in the classes.
Yeah, it'll bring in, it'll bring in the middle class. No consequence. And it, and it's, and it's happened so often. Ivan Etch is leaving the profession at the end of the year.
Okay, my last thing, of course, are enrollment numbers. And enrollment numbers last year at this time compared to this year. Uh, this year, right now, we have a total as of today, uh, two thousand five hundred and sixteen students. Uh, last year at this time was twenty-five oh six. Um, so any questions on this?
Sorry, I've got one more question on the cellphone thing. What was the verification method for parents participating?
They had to be in our, our Skyward system. They had to be a guardian within our Skywards, guardian one or guardian two.
Okay, you got it. I was just thinking, well, I was like, did one of our students hijack?
Okay, that's it for me. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And then, um, next, next is, uh, other reports. We've got a web, uh, web presentation, um, Mr. Cox, do you want to...
Sure. So, uh, Mr. Cox was dealing with some, uh, family sickness issues and so he prepared a video in lieu of being here live for the report tonight, so we'll watch that.
Good evening. Hi, I'm Daniel Cox. I am the OTHS website and social media coordinator here at OTHS, also a member of our OTHS Communications Committee. So, uh, wanted to give you a quick update here on all the different things that we have discussed as far as the Communications Committee goes and also on the website and social media, uh, front that we have that we operate here at OTHS. So without further ado, let me hop into it. This is our...
Let me try that again.
Our forward face.
I tested this twenty times.
I can believe you.
Love that effect.
I know.
Facing district website that we've worked real hard to make, uh, make our own, make very clean and unique to our district. Uh, one of the probably most fascinating features here is the ability to embed video here, uh, highlighting our school spirit and all the different facilities and wonderful things that are going on here at OTHS, not only with still pictures, but also as you can see, uh, some video that we even captured during the homecoming rally here courtesy of our Panther Beat staff. So they did a great job capturing that video, so I pulled some of the clips that they had and just posted them here on the website. So our, uh, our collaboration with them is, is also working out very nicely. So using their wonderful things that they do to highlight OTHS is a feature of our website here as well. So as you scroll down here throughout our page, you can see, these are our most frequently visited items here at, with over ten thousand clicks per day, if you could believe that or not. We have, uh, all our most frequently visited icons there. We also highlight our district news and different announcements that come out from, uh, the district office, the athletic department, all our different sources. Um, so parents and community members can come here and see what's going on here at OTHS, all the wonderful things that we are doing, including our teacher band announcing snow days and things of that, which was a huge hit. We also highlight our upcoming events here on our district calendar. We have a spot for our student-led productions, including Panther Beat and also Panthers Talks, our podcast. So those are awesome things to have. Our teachers can rely on scrolling down and seeing our daily Panther Beat show there, updated frequently for them, so they know right where to go to get it. And then at the bottom of the page is our social media feed. So even if you are not a Facebook member or Twitter or X, I'm sorry, and Instagram, uh, member, you can always get what is happening here at OTHS. Probably our most frequently updated is our social media platform. So those are highlighted there as well. So that's what it looks like. Another real quick thing that I wanted to show you here is, uh, two things actually, is our career opportunities page. I know this time of year, a lot of people, um, coming fresh out of college or looking for career, different careers, uh, can come to our website here and it is a very awesome way to highlight what is going on here at OTHS and why it is important for us to, to recruit the, the best. And so they can come here, anybody looking for an open position can see exactly why OTHS is the best, what, uh, what that means to them. We have our open positions here, we have our collective bargaining agreements here, and then we have a highlight of why OTHS is obviously the place that they want to be here in the future. Um, and as you scroll down, we've even interviewed or asked a, a survey for people to fill out what it means to be a Panther. And so you can click through here and see different things of, uh, different quotes from our wonderful faculty and staff, um, about what it means to be a Panther to them. So that's kind of a cool little feature here for, um, not only our community, but also for recruiting aspects, as we know that that's getting more and more difficult here in the future. And then the other thing is, we're working, once again, I told you earlier, we're working kind of closely with Panther Beat, uh, using the students as an opportunity to get the great news out there for everybody. We have a plethora of clubs, activities and athletics. And so one of the goals coming in, and, uh, Mr. Cozad and I have been working on this kind of closely, is that, uh, if I don't know what clubs are out there, it's really hard for me to get involved. So I can come to our Clubs and Activities page, I can look down through here and be like, okay, and as we create more of these, more of these will pop up. But I don't know what esports or culture mix or FCA is, I can now click on these and it will take me to a video highlighting what exactly esports are. So that is a cool, uh, cool little something that we are working on here. Hopefully, in the near future, we will be able to get a video for every single club or activity that's interested in doing so, kind of a recruitment video to highlight what exactly is each of these activities are. So as you can see, the ones that are underlined in blue already have some videos that are, that are awesome to see, our Gold Rush Club, Future Educators, but, uh, those already have videos on what they are. Once again, created by our Panther Beat staff in our video production classes. And we just highlight it by linking it to the website for our students to see and get more involved with. So that's a, that's a really cool thing we're working on here. Other thing I want to show you is our OTHS mobile app, which is relatively recently updated and put out there for public consumption. So this is a cool feature that, uh, we have been developing, where you can just download it straight to your phone. You go to the Apple App Store, you go to the Google Play Store, wherever that you, uh, you get your apps from, and you'll download it. And you could kind of see the icon here, uh, on my phone, the OTHS Panther there with a gold background. And then once you open that up, it'll bring you to our front-facing mobile app page. And what that looks like is our district news. It's our district news feed, it's our calendar, it's basically everything that are those quick-hitting items that parents and students and faculty members are looking for, just in a more concise, more mobile-friendly version. So you can see the district news is scrolling at the top, you can see that our, uh, our district calendar and everything is going on here. Um, and as you go through the app, there are different features down at the bottom. You can click on our district news tab, which includes all of the, the different wonderful things that are going on here at OTHS that we post on our website, also goes over to our mobile app. Um, you can click on a full calendar there, you can see what, what's happened in the past, what's coming up in the future. And also, if I'm a parent or a student and I need to find out what my teacher's email address is, or I'm trying to look for the, uh, my assistant principal, I can come to the faculty and staff directory, very easily search for somebody using their name, it pops up, and then right there, you can click on their name, their email address, all their contact information pops up. So accessibility is, is tremendous here with this app. And then lastly, the hamburger menu at the far right of the app includes our daily bulletin. These are our most frequently visited pages, um, so we thought it was important to include these on our app as well. If you're a parent, you need to call your kid in sick. Administration team's right there to call the attendance office, know exactly what to do. You'll have your, your lunch menu, all the different things here, uh, forward-facing on the mobile app, very, very easy and user-friendly. So that's a cool thing. I encourage everybody to download it. Um, it is updated frequently and it is an awesome asset in addition to OTHS. Lastly, one of the other things that we are working on is our athletics webpage. We've been working on this for, uh, quite a while now, but scheduling and everything else has been really difficult to hammer down with this. I think we've got it all figured out now. We'll be able to roll it out soon, if at the very latest, it will be rolled out before next school year for, for a hundred percent certain. Um, but we wanted to maintain the consistency and the look of the district page over to the athletic page. The only thing that'll be different, of course, ours is our menus across the top. We have it broken down by spring, uh, winter and fall sports. Uh, and then our, our slideshow slash video show here at the beginning will be more athletically focused. We currently also have our Panther Beat students working on something athletically focused, a video that we can highlight there. Um, but yeah, there will be the district news, everything that you'll see from the district side will also be available to our athletic department to post at the athletic side. Um, so what does it look like for a specific sport? Let's just take a look at, uh, football, for example, is one of our first ones that we worked on. So you'll have, uh, a slideshow, picture show, whatever that, that particular coach would like here at the beginning. You can see, this is obviously the varsity football team. On the right-hand side, you'll see their schedule, roster, coaching staff, if you need to get ahold of them, and any sport-specific documents. Uh, you'll have their calendar of events that will be coming up. Um, this will automatically feed from the arbiter system that the athletic department uses, so that's a good feature to have. Soon as athletic department updates it, say a game is canceled, something like that, it will automatically come over to the website, which is what has been taking so long, is nailing down all that technology and things like that. Um, and then lastly is the social media feeds for those specific sports. So since we're on the football page here, we have it narrowed down to the football social media feeds. Um, a lot of people ask, can we get results based on, or onto our website? And yes, we can, because here's what the, what the, the goal is with this, is that a football coach, per, on Friday night, they play their game, they post to their social media more than likely anyway, and that's going to be highly encouraged. I'll work with the coaches, be like, hey, what's your most frequently, uh, updated social media page? And we will make sure that is embedded on their website so that when they post their results or their news or whatever, it automatically goes to the website that you see here in front of you. So this will be a huge asset as far as results go, as far as news goes for, uh, our, our parents and our athletes, um, that it'll be updated frequently here on the website. So, and that will be for every single sport. So as long as sports are updating on their end, as far as their social media goes, then yeah, we will highlight it on our website as well. So that's what the, uh, the, the website, the social media front looks like. As far as the Communications Committee goes, um, it's been exciting to work with the Communications Committee. I think it's definitely a, uh, an awesome thing for OTHS to have something, uh, like this, where we can get all the wonderful things that are going on and highlight those out to our community, because I think it's important for people to see what goes on, um, here within the walls of OTHS. But also, uh, one of the, the biggest highlights that's going to come up next month is when we get to work with our students. So we've invited a handful of students to come and join us for our next Communications Committee meeting. And, uh, last year, that was a big hit, because it, we, we learn a lot from the students of what they're expecting, some ideas that they have and things like that, so that's always a good one. And then in the future, our collaboration with Panther Beat. Panther Beat always does an awesome job highlighting everything, it's just a matter of getting it out there to the pub, for public consumption, um, and highlighting OTHS and getting it out there so that parents can see what's going on as well. Um, and also, that's a big recruitment tool as well. So our collaboration with Panther Beat in the future, we are always looking forward to that. Um, so yeah, once again, my name is Daniel Cox. If you guys have any questions, comments, concerns ever on the, the, the public relations front, let me know. I'd be happy to, uh, sit down, meet with you. Um, I also look forward to seeing you guys in the future. I know I see quite a few of you anyway, but, uh, we'll see you at the board retreat this weekend probably too. So thanks for giving me this opportunity and this time.
So Communication, um, Committee did not meet the month of February, our next meeting, and it was just, um, uh, set by, um, Mr. Cox's March eleventh at five P.M. And we will have students joining us at that meeting. And then Ethan will be joining us in the future meeting so that we can set up some API to make sure we're, we're, the communication is meeting the strategic goals and objectives of the board on board.
All right, Education, Mr. Grabik. We met on February the eleventh. Mr. Graham did a great job of, of getting set up, of all of the things that we had listed on that deal with the school report card, uh, as far as, uh, our, our goals and so, and so forth. Uh, there have been committees formed for most every one of those things, uh, among the staff, and, uh, we continue to monitor that and see how things go. We meet again on March the eleventh, is that the two thing?
Yes.
Yeah, at four o'clock. Okay, Facilities, Mr. Richard?
Uh, we met on February eleventh. I've had our shortest meeting ever. Was about a half hour long and, uh, my report is attached. Uh, and believe it or not, I have nothing else to report as, uh, uh, first time in ten years, so, uh, we're going to see how the retreat goes and take it from there. Our next meeting will be, uh, March the eleventh.
Sounds good. Finance Committee, there was no meeting this past month. Um, our next meeting is pending a financial audit. Uh, Personnel Negotiations, Mr. Hough?
Uh, no update, but we will have a meeting in March.
And Policy and Governments, Mr. Beal?
We did have a meeting on the third of February and we went through about ten, um, policy updates from press. Some of them we had recently updated, but because they came out on the quarterly updated press, we just updated them again, so that we stay in that rhythm and we, we keep with the quarterly updates. There were, one of them that we, we did update, the curriculum content, um, policy six, colon six zero, had a lot of mandates included in it. The other ones were, were mainly no substantive changes really, but that one did have a lot of mandates included in it. I know Beth, you guys are going through all of that. That's the only one that's, that bears speaking of. So there are ten for first reading. We have no for, no policy for second reading, because it was a snow day and we're supposed to have our policy committee meeting, so, um, there are no policies to implement this time. Um, our next meeting is going to be the fourth of March at four P.M.
Due to recognize, uh, this, we just got our ideas being quarterly or monthly, but however that all comes out. And Heather is our new representative for, uh, the Southwest Region for the Illinois Association of School Boards, taking Mark Chris away, so congratulations.
Thank you. With that, thank you very much, Steve. We didn't plan this. Um, I do have some talking points, which is, we, we have our, um, our division meetings coming up. Uh, the quarterly division meetings are coming up. The next one for Southwest Division is going to be on the twelfth of March, five thirty in Troy at Silver Creek Elementary. And so that's where we're all get together, we'll be able to meet with other boards of education and just, you know, talk through some ideas. We're kind of changing up how we're doing this and going to focus it more on networking. It's kind of what the ISAB wants to do now, is more networking with, um, other school board members and to facilitate more talking. We're gonna, um, change the schedule up a little bit, but, um, as many board members as can be there, I encourage you to, it is kind of close to home in Troy, um, the twelfth of March.
And there was a best meeting this, uh, this month, so Ms. Johnson?
Yeah, the best committee met on February 4th. All the superintendents were there and gave an update on each one of their districts. And then, we also talked about the best retreat that is coming up in April. We are going to break off into pillars and really focus on the vision 2020. So, we'll have each district personnel break up and have discussion topics around that, and then move around, and then report out. So, it should be a very good retreat and a way for us to meet all of our fellow board members in our different districts. So, I'm looking forward to that. Our next meeting will be March 25th at Joseph Arthur Middle School. And again, we're going to finalize the retreat planning for that. And we're trying to make sure that we get the mayors from both city or planners, so we, as the board, knows what's happening in both of the feeder district cities, be able to talk that. So, I guess most of all of the districts do have a new board member, so it is a great opportunity for everybody to meet all the new board members that are in each district.
Where's the retreat going to be done?
Oh, the retreat is going to be in public work still. Any other questions? And Beth, did I miss anything?
The date of the retreat is April 10th. Is it? I'm sorry. Is it?
Yes, it's April 10th at 6:00 p.m.
All right. That kind of wraps up the committee reports. I guess, were written communication, were there any written communications sent to the board?
No.
Okay. Public comments, would any members of the public like to speak to the board this time? Okay, if not, then we move to the consent agenda. A motion to approve the consent agenda in its entirety, including but not limited to prior meeting minutes, financial reports, payment of bills, Freedom of Information Act requests, and the disposal of obsolete equipment. So moved. Roll call.
I do want to just say two real quick here, because I'm on my solo panel kick, just to get this out. It looks like about $27,000 of electricity bills in this month. I'm just pulling that out as we, I know Keith, you're quick to explore, but.
We'll be talking about it.
Just like to point that out.
So, we have an energy assessment meeting with one of the vendors next week. We actually have Cameron here from Tider Electric tonight just to visit the meeting, but we have others as well.
Great, fantastic.
All right, so roll call.
Oh. Richter?
Aye.
LeBlu?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Huck?
Aye.
Derby?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye. All right, in old business, we have a Board Retreat coming up, so it's just a discussion on the agenda. And I know Dr. Shackelford has posted an agenda, so do you want to take a second to just kind of present that to the board? And I think some of the description differs just a little bit from, you know, what we might have had last month, but I think it's all, it's all the intent is there.
So, last month, we talked about the time that we were going to the lot and the subjects that we would allot to. So, you'll see in the agenda, start with a 30-minute discussion on the discipline review hearing processes and procedures, as well as an update on our alternative education program. Then, for each committee, we'll have 30 minutes to spend on purpose goals, refining those initiatives, considerations for the future, just basically talking about the committee as a whole and on a very high level and providing some direction there. So, that's for Education Committee. We'll do the same for Communication and Special Committees, the same for Facilities, Safety, and Transportation, same for Finance. Another part of that Finance piece will be the five-year financial projection that we typically review at retreat every year. And then, there's a section entitled Future Finance Considerations. That's when we'll have a representative, Ann Noble from Stifel here, as well as a representative from PMA, to discuss bond opportunities and financing opportunities that will be coming in the future. And she's going to present kind of tiers of what would be available specifically for some of our facility needs, based on how the board would like to proceed as it relates to the finances, okay? So, she'll present that first. And again, since we haven't prioritized the facility document yet, she'll just be using examples from our document, and then, of course, that can be reprioritized in any way, but it's really just showing what different financial commitments can do for the district. Then, we'll have a lunch break. And again, depending on where we are, we'll take lunch at 11:50 regardless of where we are in the agenda. After that is the large two-hour discussion, where we'll be looking at the facility document that the Facilities Committee has been working on refining for several months, how that relates to finance, and then how that relates to our education goals and the alignments of those. And the goal there will be to take that maintenance cycle document and have a list of priorities and the marriage of those three things, facilities, finances, and our education goals, should help us prioritize that document, so that we can make that responsible financial and facility planning for the future. So, we have two hours for that, because that's a hefty lift, okay? Then, we will go back into Committees. We have 30 minutes for governance and policy, as well as personnel and negotiations. There is a placeholder for closed session if needed. Don't anticipate any action items, so I don't have any action items in the agenda. And then, time for public comment and closing remarks. If we run ahead of schedule, we have the other items that were listed for consideration of discussion that we will get to if we are ahead throughout the day.
Okay, thank you. Board members, any questions? 8:30?
8:00 a.m.
8:00 a.m.
Breakfast will be available beginning at 7:30.
Okay. Any other questions, board members? Okay, that takes us to new business. So, a motion to approve the appointment, compensation, dispo, performance dismissal of personnel items as presented. So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Richter?
Aye.
LeBlu?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Huck?
Aye.
Derby?
Aye.
Isol?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye. Next question, are there any pay applications?
We should not proceed any pay actions.
So, we'll skip that and move to item 9.3. Motion to approve bid for the asbestos abatement cafeteria flooring project from Midwest Services Group in the amount of $82,988. So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
LeBlu?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Huck?
Aye.
Derby?
Aye.
Isol?
Aye.
Richter?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye. Okay, next is a motion to approve trips in excess of 200 miles. So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Derby?
Aye.
Isol?
Aye.
Richter?
Aye.
LeBlu?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Huck?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye. Next is a motion to approve the amended OTHS public school calendar for the 24-25 school year, using previous roll call. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Motion to approve the amended OTHS public school calendar for the 25-26 school year, using previous roll call. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between the O'Fallon Township High School District 203 Board of Education and the O'Fallon Federation of Teachers regarding a speech-language pathologist vacancy, using previous roll call. So moved.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, so we will postpone item 9.8 and move to item 9.9, which is a discussion on board policies. No discussion?
Okay, so our next regular meeting of the Board of Education is on March 20th. At that meeting, we hope to review the audit and summer school offering and staff recommendations for the 25-26 school year. Some of the dates upcoming are the Board Retreat this weekend on Saturday and Kashmir Plasky Day on March 3rd. So, with that, motion to adjourn.
I have a major announcement. Lady Panthers are regional champions.
Yay! I know.
You are all thinking of putting our reds in there.
So moved.
Second.
Let me say a second again today. All in favor?
Aye.
So moved.
Oh, what an album. I didn't do that. And Isol, that's why. I said, what did you say?